This meeting of the City Eureka Springs City Council come to order. The clerk will call it off, please.
Dean Perkypile?
Here.
Joyce Sellar?
Here.
Terry McLenn?
Here.
Nikki Schneider?
Here.
James DeVito?
Here.
David Mitchell?
Here.
That's six.
Mr. Weaver will not be with us tonight. He is an infirmity that has bedridden him for a couple of days, so he shall return probably the next meeting. So any issues you have with Mr. Him, well, and Mr. Weaver, I have to address with the council.
Yeah, practically everything.
If everybody please stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Do you see? Next will be approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss?
Second.
Any changes, deletions, corrections? Mr. Mitchell.
Sir, I, because of our city attorney isn't here, we possibly should consider under unfinished business, I don't, he was supposed to be doing something as an ordinance to remove Knott Street, and if it's not, I don't see it attached, so do we want to table that? That's what that was? Second. Okay. And then under new business, number one, the ordinance rezoning Mountain Street to C3 is, was the follow-up to the removing it from religious because it was never in there, and he has, we don't have that either, so could we table that?
Isn't that in his third reading or something?
No.
No.
Because it's number four and number five.
Number, 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 uh, number one under new business, number four under unfinished business, number one under new business, and then also number four under new business. The Clean City Ordinance was referred to via city attorney, so we would want to table that, too.
Number four and what else?
Four under unfinished business, under new business, one and four.
Second. Any others? Mr. Perkypile?
Well, my understanding, after reviewing them, the tape was at number five under unfinished business for ordinance for intimate theater as a permitted use. We sent that back to Mr. Weaver also.
It's in here.
Yeah, we've got it.
We have a draft?
We do have.
In our stuff. That's why I pulled it off.
All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. May.
Um, under new business number two, hours of operation and animals in C3, would that go along with the other? Because I don't think that was dealt with on that paper.
I, yes, we, table.
Okay, so table number two, and then?
Second.
And then number eight, this really needs to start at planning. I mean, they've handled our chickens and everything else for quite a long time, so could we send number eight to, uh, to planning first?
I believe they have a hearing set for that.
You're issuing?
Are we amending that, or what?
Let me check and make sure, because I have it. Uh, says point of commission will hold a public hearing on this revision on November the 12th, 2013. Doesn't give a time.
So could we table that?
Yes, we can. If the council wants to.
Could we table that?
You can do whatever you want to do. Because you are.
Well, maybe not everything.
Okay. So can we table it until planning has finished, whatever they're doing?
Motion and a second?
Second.
Okay. Can you postpone?
Let's keep going.
As long as we're on the roll.
Five through eight.
While we're still on the roll here, I need to add the nomination of Mr. Henry Romanski to the Cemetery Commission, position number four. We can do that during the cemetery discussion, or we can do it now.
Motion to, what, do we have to do anything with it, or do you just nominate?
No, just nominate. You have copies of it. Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right. Uh, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a sign? Agenda's approved. Next will be approval amendment for September the 23rd, 2013. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any changes, deletion, corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moves us on to Commission Committee Authority reports in expired terms. Beverly is here for planning. There you are, Beverly.
Okay, I just want to tell you that, um, at our next meeting, October the 22nd, we are having a public hearing for Eight Washington Street. As many of y'all know, that was set empty for a long time. They're asking for a 200-foot variance, and they are asking for a CUP. We're not going to give the CUP because there's a moratorium on that, but we are going to have the hearing to see how that goes, not to hold up the sale for that. Also, I wanted to give you an update on the zoning map. Here's just a little bit of history about the zoning map. That zoning map that's on the wall that has the lots and blocks is from 1893. Then in 1989, we got a zoning map, and it still had the blocks, but it just didn't have the numbers in them. It didn't have the lots and blocks written in them. Then in, this is the zoning map that we got last in 1999, and it has no lots and no blocks. And so, when I joined planning, and we saw that there was a great need for a zoning map, we just thought we would take this map, make all the changes that were zoning changes for the last, you know, since 1999, and update it. But then they, everybody that was using this map, the realtors and the people at the City Hall, said, "It's really not very good, because it's very vague. It doesn't have the lots and blocks in it." So we started down that road to try to go back and get the lots and block numbers to put this on it. And then they found out that the county was doing aerial mapping of the Eureka Springs, and we thought it was going to be lots and blocks, and that we could just put it over. But now we, um, received this, what they've done, and it's parcels, if you want to pass this around. And so it's parcel map. So if, if one parcel had four and a half lots and blocks in it, that's what the mapping is. And so that's really not going to help us for our zoning. So we're backing all the way up to trying to find the lots and blocks. Some of those maps were missing, um, of all of our lots and blocks. So what we're going to do is get all the lots and blocks that we have, get them to McClland, and get the overlays on them. If, if a small piece is missing that doesn't have a lot and block, that would still be better than what we are at today. And, um, we are also working still on the rezoning of South Main Street to C1. There was one large parcel, that is one parcel, but it goes back further than what we were trying to rezone. So again, we're going to leave that one small piece out unless somebody comes to that public hearing when we get it all set and everybody notified that they really want to be, then they can help us with the legal description of that.
Beverly, um, I understand, you know, the desire to have a lot and blocks, but, but that map, I mean, are they, are they finding that it's not specific enough because of depth, uh, in, in the zones, or is it, is it incorrect? Because, because a person can look at that map and see where he is on that map and determine whether he's, what zone he's in. I've done it 100 times.
Except for sometimes when it's right in the corner of a C2 and a R2, like, right here, unless you knew exactly all the blocks, you can't tell. You have to go and pull the records. And what, what they're having to do almost all the time is Glenn is having to go to the county and pull the record to find out really what it is zoned, because it's just not specific enough. I mean, if it's in, if it's in the middle of a big pink section, you could tell. But if it's right in a corner where the, sometimes there's two or three, you can't tell.
I'll have that trouble.
Okay, government in a small town. Okay.
Thank you, Beverly. But, uh, you should have several of the, uh, the reports from the businesses, and I didn't disseminate or didn't figure out which one are the priorities and which ones are the reports, because I can, can't really see a lot right now. So we'll just go through those, and at this time, we'll separate the two. Um, as far as I know, we don't have any reports until we get to the cemetery. I don't think Bruce is here, is there any chance? Okay. Should we get the cemetery and deal with the nomination of Mr. Henry Romanski? I'll get that in a minute, for position number four. Move to discuss?
Nominate?
Yes. Give a second.
Second.
Okay. He is the only application we have for nomination at this time. So, check him out. If you say to anybody who wants to call him, you can. Okay, nothing else on that, and it moves us to public comments. Okay, top of the list is Chris Hall.
Yes.
Yeah, come on up.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Chris Hall, and I'm an engineer with McGinn, Williams &amp; Yates, and I'm here representing, uh, Carroll Boone Water District. Uh, I handed out a sheet of paper here, and basically what we are here to do tonight is to ask for the city council to pass a resolution to allow Carroll Boone to, uh, go after either private funding or through ANRC, just to, uh, fund improvements that are needed to the transmission line. And, uh, the phase one improvements, right here, we're talking about, uh, is the paralleling of a line from the, the plant to the, uh, east side of your, uh, east meter, your second meter on 23. And, uh, that would be phase one. And, uh, basically, uh, the district, when it was formed, the transmission line was, uh, designed to carry 12 MGD. And, uh, in 2003, we built the Greenberry Booster Station. Uh, and basically, we built that in lieu of paralleling the line. And what that did is it gave us 10 years of being able to transmit water down the line to Harrison, Berryville, and Green Forest. And, uh, but we do a master plan every five years, and we turn it into the health department. And we knew this was coming down the line, and this last one we've done, uh, gave us the proof that we needed, that we're going to have to do something with the line, and paralleling makes the most sense for all the improvements that we're doing out in the future. Uh, basically, we ran this thing out 50 years, and by that time, if we paralleled the line from here all the way to, uh, the Pine Mountain tanks, then we wouldn't need the booster stations or anything. They could gravity flow from the plant to the tanks and be able to feed everybody the water they need, and we'd have 50-plus year, uh, where we had all the, uh, water we need from the plant. So, um, basically, uh, right now, you've got 47 miles of line. You've got 30-inch and 24-inch pipe. And so, uh, we're wanting to get this thing started now, because we're in, uh, it's going to take two to three years to get this thing designed and constructed. And we're at the, uh, the district has already hit about 11.8 to 12 MGD on their max day. So we've got about 15 MGD plus or minus capacity in this water line. So we're getting really close to need to do something. Uh, in the memorandum of understanding, uh, that the city signed with Carroll Boone Water District in the beginning, it says in here that if the district, that the district will present future facilities to each of the cities, and that they, uh, if they need, uh, for, uh, let's see here, I'm sorry, excuse me. That the district will operate and expand the system as required to meet the present and future needs, and if they are future needs and they have to go in debt, that they ha, they seek approval from three of the, they get approval from three of the four cities on a resolution. And so that's the reason we're here tonight, is to ask for that resolution. We've already been to the city, we've, I think, uh, somebody from our firm has met with each of the mayors of each city. Harrison has already signed and, and passed a resolution. Green Forest is voting tonight, and that's where, uh, another counterpart of mine is at, at this moment. And Berryville is voting on it tomorrow night.
Mr. Mitchell.
I wish this had been an agenda topic. It's kind of hard to, can we do this under public comments?
You can, well, I don't think you can right now, from my understanding. No discussion.
And plus, I'm not too sure what this is going to cost us. So could we move this to an agenda topic, or is that, was there some emergency we need to do this, or what's going on here?
It's two to three here in design.
Yeah, just down the road. They just need a resolution to get, to go ahead on our part. Resolution just gives them permission to go ahead and continue from city.
Doesn't obligate us to any, anything.
No, not that I understand.
Well, no, that's, well.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I wouldn't put it exactly like that.
I mean, where are you obligated to it?
Well, yes.
For the water.
The resolution, the, the board does not want to continue, and they won't continue unless they get the resolution from three of the four cities. And the reason is, is because they're about to pay a lot of money for studies. Now, we kind of know what we need to do, but when you start talking about detailed design, uh, we're going to have to deal with easements, which is going to be a major deal. Uh, and then construction, that is very rough country between, you know, between the district and, and here. And so, uh, you know, we're thinking a year and a half to two years of construction. And so if you talk about a year of design, then you're out, you know, and we're going to need this within the next five years, if not sooner. So that's the reason that, you know, while we're trying to hurry this thing, uh, to go ahead and, and get the funding in place. Also, uh, it's hard, you talk about rates and stuff, you know? We don't really know what it's going to cost yet, because we haven't gotten into detailed design. We've made a stab of, the projects are going to cost anywhere from 14 to 17 million dollars. Now, that's preliminary. We get into it, maybe a little cheaper, you know? We don't know yet, because we haven't done the detail. That's just kind of a broad-stroke view of it. Uh, they looked at what bonds are going for today, and, uh, if we did 17 million dollars, it would raise rates about 50,000, uh, 50 cents per thousand gallons. And if you look down at the bottom, you can see what the rates are today. And, um, so, but, now, that doesn't mean it's going to raise 50 cents. The board will, is going to look at their, you know, they're going to do a rate study, they're going to look at what they, they have, they may use some reserves, uh, to kind of bring that down. And, you know, so I'm not, there's no way to know today to tell you an exact number, and I apologize for that, but until we get into the detailed, detailed design, we're not going to know. And the board is not going to allow us to do a detailed design until they have a resolution.
Mr. May, you have your question.
Um, can we ask him to be next after public comments? Because legally, we can't be asking questions.
I'll just, I'll amend the agenda to allow CBWBD to address the council at this time.
Okay, whichever, as long as we can ask questions legally.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. McLenn.
Um, we can't, we can't do a resolution tonight anyway. We don't have our city attorney to draft it. So I think what we need to do is just go ahead and put this on our next meeting with a resolution at that time where we can, you know, read it and prove it and be done with it. I mean, it's something we're going to do.
True.
So, uh, uh, you know, it's, there's just, we don't have any way to do it tonight. We don't have a resolution prepared to read, we don't have the attorney to draft it. So, uh, I say put it off till next meeting and take care of it that time.
Would you, I mean, since I'm here, would you all like to ask any questions about this project?
We're about to do that.
I'd be glad to answer any and all questions.
We're about to do that right now. Mr. Weaver, you have your question.
Well, I was just wondering, do, do you have a resolution that was given to Harrison and Berryville, or did they draft their own resolutions?
Um, we did a, uh, we made up one that they could use as a guideline if they wanted to. Uh, I don't have one of those with me. I can send that.
Yeah, we need to get that to the city attorney.
Okay, yeah, I can, yeah, I can get that to you. That's not a problem.
Mr. May.
Um, okay, number six on our new business tonight is the discussion of fluoride.
No, ma'am.
Is this new?
Don't even, don't, don't go there.
Is this new piping going to be compatible if we're forced into fluoride? Because I know I've-
Yes, oh, yes, yes. Actually, this has nothing to do, this is nothing to do with the fluoride.
Well, no, what I'm saying is-
But I know what you're saying. No, no, this will definitely be compatible.
Okay.
This is just to increase the capacity of the water line, so that, the district is trying to be proactive, you know? The last thing we want to do is, y'all need water, and they can't deliver it. And so that's what we're, you know, we're trying to do.
Well, by the time you guys get past the planning and into actually doing, you already know if we're going to have to or not, so you would do it accordingly, right?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Perkypile?
Uh, yes, sir. What exactly do you need from this council tonight? Just assurance that, you know, the-
Well, the, uh, like I said, the memorandum of understanding, when it was written, it's kind of a checks and balances. So basically, the district, uh, promises that it will always do a master plan or something of that nature to make sure they know what's coming down the line based off past usages and things of that nature, you know? They kind of try to project what they might need. Well, in turn, they can't just go out there and go in debt and say, "All right, cities, here, you're raised, we're going to raise your rates, and this, you know, here's, here you go." So what they do is they have to go to each member city, which there's four of them. And I have to, or they're, you know, somebody that is representing Carroll Boone Water District tells you about the project, lets you ask all the questions you need, and then what we have to have is, y'all have to pass a resolution to allow the district to go into debt or go into this study and do these improvements so that they can get water to the member cities.
So to follow up on that, uh, you're okay if we get a resolution for, before this table at the next council meeting, which is due two weeks?
Yes, oh, yes. Yes, that is no issue.
I have another question to, this is more kind of an engineering question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so where does that line, where will that line go? Will it, will by any chance go anywhere near, I mean, where does the current line go that you're going to parallel?
Well, the line kind of goes across country. It starts on, uh, is it 186? Is that the road that's right there?
187.
187, thank you. It goes up there, it goes past, um, that, what's it, uh, now I'm on the spot here and on TV.
Well, no, that's okay.
But anyway, it goes across country.
Where does it come into the city? Where, where's the point?
Well, actually, you have, uh, you have, uh, your own city lines that come into the city. We're on Lake, we're south of Lake Lugwick. That's where one meter is that comes to the city. And then there's another one, uh, meter station on Highway 23, just right off the highway there. And so, but from that point on-
Black Bass.
Yes.
Well, what I'm getting at is you deliver two Black Bass, to those lift stations, two Black Bass, correct?
Those meter stations, yes.
Right. That is, that is, that's not your meter station, that's the city's meter.
That's the city's, city's meter station, yes, sir.
So in these improvements, uh, do you think there might be, do, are you going to run a parallel line right up to that point?
We're going to run a parallel line right next to the existing 30-inch water line, and we're going to have approximately four ties in between. And the reason we're going to do that is because if there's ever any work that needs to be done with the, because we're going to leave both of them in service. We're going to have a 36 and a 30-inch at that time. And those equivalent pipe sizes are about a 48, 40, 42. Okay? But that, uh, we've done 50-year projections to make sure that we didn't need to upsize that from, you know, 36 to a 42 or something like that, and we don't. But as long as those two lines are in service, that will provide enough water 50-plus years, you know? But we, but there's increments, you know? The phase one is just this increment from the district to Eureka Springs. The next increment will be from here to Kills Creek, and that will be, you know, approximately 10 years or so, or five, uh, after this project is finished. And then we just kind of do that, we just kind of keep paralleling it until we, you know, reach, uh, around the Greenberry Booster Station.
Well, I guess my question was, where would that stop? I mean, would those lift stations have to be upgraded there at Black Bass?
No, no, we'll make sure that you don't have to, no. There won't be anything, uh, that you will have to do, you know, as far as I understand, to your meter stations or anything like that. Everything will run normal, because we're going to make sure the ties are like that. Okay? The ties between the two lines, you'll still get water, but you'll be able to get water from both lines at that point. But you won't have to do anything to your existing facilities.
So it really doesn't add any more capacity, because we only have a certain amount of capacity?
Well, yes, yes. It, it adds capacity to the transmission line.
Yeah.
But not to your individual city lines that come from those meters.
I see. So in order to do that, we would have to upgrade the lift station?
Yes, you would have to.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yes, it is. Sorry.
Anybody else? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Steve Beecham.
Excuse me, did you have another one of these?
You can have it. You can have it. I don't need it. What do I want that for?
Hello, Steve.
Hi, everyone. My name is Steve Beecham and I'm a resident and a business owner here in Eureka. I'm here to encourage you to create a committee to, uh, relook at and maybe revamp the existing noise ordinance. Hopefully, the committee would be comprised of people representing all sides of this issue with council oversight. Uh, the group hopefully would include residents, motorcycle experts, law enforcement, business owners, CAPC, Chamber of Commerce, and council. Uh, there are many other towns that have ordinances on the books and groups that have suggested solutions to excessive noise. We're not reinventing the wheel here. We are a tourist town, but we're also a town of residents. As a friend put it, this town is not a business and the residents are not its employees. This is not Knott's Berry's Farm. It's a home to over 200, 2,000 people, excuse me. Uh, we need to find a way for everyone to enjoy their time here in Eureka Springs. But our population also needs to grow and residents need to feel this is their home. Our visitors need to experience all the good things that we have, but must not destroy what they come to enjoy. Eureka Springs was founded at the end of the horse and carriage age and is ushered in the horseless carriage age. Transportation issues have always been a part of our history. And working together, hopefully, we can solve the excessive noise issue. Again, I urge the council to be at the forefront of this issue concerning health and safety. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Tom Thorpe.
Hey, guys. Uh, when you get down to the, uh, item on the agenda tonight, I believe you're gonna have an option to lift the moratorium on the sightseeing tour business licenses. Uh, I'd like to see that just go ahead and lifted. Uh, made some suggestions to y'all via email for some amendments to that or additions to that. And I'm just afraid that may be one can of worms we might not want to get into just yet. Hang on to that in case we need it at some point in the future. Right now, as sporadic as the person is who is the cause for the potential need for that stuff, he's not very consistent. So I don't think at this point we need to really pursue making a whole bunch of changes to that business license and making it more difficult than it needs to be. But y'all discuss that and come to your own conclusions on that. And, uh, you know, if you need any questions or insight on that when we get to that topic, feel free to ask.
Mark Hughes. Hello, Mark.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mark Hughes. Uh, I live at 101 Owen Road here in Eureka. Prepared. There's a growing concern within the community about the decreasing population in Eureka Springs. And at this moment, there are at least 15 structures listed for sale between the Gavioli Chapel and Highway 62. Several of those homes are residents who say they can no longer stand the increase of noise and traffic on the upper loop or have had just had enough of being in Eureka in general. The homeowner in closest proximity to the Gavioli Chapel has put his home up for sale and plans to leave Eureka after living here most of his 67 years. Our town cannot afford to lose good residents at such a crucial economic time. Loss of residents will force us to depend more heavily on tourism than we already are. When it was discovered that the Intrigue Theater was operating in the Gavioli Chapel without the correct zoning, members of the Crescent LLC met with the neighbors and did their best to make improvements to the parking area to alleviate the inconvenience. But not all problems were dealt with completely. Since then, Crescent LLC has received the C3 zoning status they were after to let the Intrigue Theater stay in operation, and the neighborhood has resigned themselves to that fact. If they are given a CUP as an intimate theater, they will be able to operate, but would still have to answer to neighborhood complaints. This seems only fair when operating a business after regular hours in a residential neighborhood. If council refuses to take the recommendation of the Planning Commission and adds intimate theater to the list of C3 uses, the neighbors will lose the right to file for revocation of the CUP should the nuisance of the theater continue to grow. At a time when population is decreasing and citizens feel their town is becoming less of a community and more of a business, it's hard to believe the Crescent LLC sees themselves as the victim in this situation. I urge council members to ask themselves what would be best for the residents in this situation rather than what is going to make somebody the most money. Please do what you can to give residents a better voice in deciding what kinds of businesses should be allowed to operate in residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, it is Ms. Gwynn Bennett. Hello, Gwynn.
Hi, everyone. And here, I've got card copies of this letter. I don't have time to read it all. Maybe this down?
Yeah.
After watching the city council meeting of 9:09, I found it disturbing that planning had studied the issue of the Intrigue Theater and they were confident the theater is not an artist studio workshop. I also found it disturbing that Tim said he is not, still not confident that it is operating legally and a different police chief and building inspector could cite the theater for operating. Tim also expressed that a court of law could easily clear this up. There's no ambiguity in the code. An artist studio, by the dictionary definition, an establishment where art is taught or studied. Example, dance studio. Workshop, an educational seminar or series of meetings emphasizing interaction or exchange of information. Example, a creative writing workshop. The word theater is used only as an example of a type of studio or workshop. I'm concerned with setting a bad precedent in crafting an ordinance for an individual business, a tenant business at that. I'm also concerned that if the council passes this more invasive use, it will not be required to get a CUP, which it should, out of respect to all neighborhoods adjacent to C3 zones when adding a use derived from a higher impact use. Another flaw is the ordinance is written, it's applied to the building, not the business itself. Please reconsider taking your Planning Commission's findings that the Intrigue is not a studio workshop and your city attorney's suggestion that a court of law can give a clear-headed, non-biased opinion. What council is heading towards is violating the introduction of the zoning code where it says, "No vested rights shall be created by the city's land regulation. Vested right definition is settled, fixed, or absolute. By grandfathering a business that is not legally operating and creating a new category and code, you will be vesting a right to a tenant business and the owner of the building in perpetuity. This action is favoritism towards a particular business." I want these valid concerns on the record, so if we look back on this issue, there's a clear record as I believe it to be. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jim Girkin. I hear him. There he comes. Hello, Jim Girkin.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
Lawrence.
What?
Yeah. I think I'll, how do you adjust this thing?
This is good right there, Jim. Don't want to hold you right there.
I can do it.
Yep, they'll, they'll hear you.
Okay, I can lean into it. My name's Jim Girkin. Uh, some or maybe all of you know who I am. But for those who don't, I am Jim Girkin.
Without a doubt.
I had no plans to speak at this meeting, so I have no written words like the people that I saw ahead of me. What I'm here about is item number eight on the agenda, on the, uh, about the business licenses for owners of three or more unit rentals in Eureka Springs. I own several such buildings in Eureka Springs. I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to oppose business licenses as such. Uh, what I am here is, I don't want such business licenses to, uh, give any indication to this council or future councils that a business license is a right to further tax those businesses. Because that's what, uh, more than a business license. I fear that if, if we have a business with a license, then all of a sudden there'll be a proposal that these businesses should be paying more taxes than they're paying. And my only comment toward that end is, how much rent can the renters afford to pay here? In our business, uh, we've tried to establish rents at a, at a, at the lowest possible level that we can and still justify our investments. We do not live in any of these buildings. I live at Holiday Island. My daughter lives also at Holiday Island. She manages our business. In addition to that, she also has one of these multi-unit rentals here in Eureka Springs on her own. But that's, hers is a different business. Now, my question is also, uh, is, is the proposal before the council to charge each building as a separate business? Or is it to charge my business known as Girkin Rental Properties? That's our business name. Is that the business license for my business? If so, I also have rental units at Holiday Island and, uh, a couple of units at Elk Ranch, and actually, one little house at Berryville that also is a part of Girkin Properties. So my question, I guess, is, is the city of Eureka Springs gonna charge me a business license for each individual building that I own? Each one with two or more units? Each one with one or more units? Or exactly what is the proposal? Cause I haven't seen, I haven't seen a definition of what the proposal is yet. But, as I say, I don't object to paying a, a, a reasonable license fee for whatever is reasonable. But I would, uh, ask you to keep in mind, uh, that whatever a business is cost to operate has to be passed on to the consumers who consume the product of that business. Whether it be a, uh, something that you eat or something you live in. It's still a product. And, and so if you, whatever, whatever business expense that is imposed upon a business, it, uh, just like Mr. DeVito's business, when he has to pay more for his food, he has to charge more for what he sells. So do I. And I don't, I don't like to do that. I like to keep my prices as low as we can and still justify our investment. And I, I don't think I really had anything. As I say, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't want to speak at all cause I hoped, I hoped y'all would speak first and let me know what I was talking about. I, I can assume, I guess, that nothing has been decided. I- Okay, I'll see you after decided, I guess, if I don't like it.
Thank you, sir.
But you may, thank you.
All right, take care. And that'll take care of public comments. Uh, moves us on to unfinished business. Number one is the second read of ordinance 2189, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open.
Were we supposed to get an update from the attorney on this?
Uh, I don't think this is just the second reading. No understanding.
Yeah, this is, it's had its first reading, right? Yeah, this is the second reading.
I've got on here that we had a second reading already.
Well, it was postponed until this meeting for some reason.
After the workshop, I thought.
Which came to nothing.
It is the second reading, ma'am. Nothing.
Mr. Snyder.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone it until the next meeting since our workshop was virtually nonexistent. And I do know we had discussions, we needed to have discussions in regards to prices and for whom and charity groups and so on and so forth. None of which could be addressed at our workshop, since there are only a couple of us there.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we just postponed it to the next meeting. Moves this on to number two, discussion of ordinance 2090, it'd be the third reading.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito.
I move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2190 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Get off the real call sheet here. Stand by.
Ordinance 2190, an ordinance removing 80 Mountain Street from religious use list. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we have to go through, yeah.
Let's do that. Terry McLuhan.
Yes.
Pete Pergypile.
Yes.
James DeVito.
Yes.
Joyce Seller.
Yes.
Mickey Snyder.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Six zero. Okay, ordinance 2190, ordinance removing 80 Mountain Street from the religious use list.
Mr. DeVito.
I move to approve ordinance number 2190 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Third reading.
You're gonna have to real, oh, yes, right, third call.
Sorry. It's okay.
Can't get that right.
Pete Pergypile.
Yes.
Joyce Seller.
Yes.
David Mitchell.
Yes.
Terry McLuhan.
Yeah.
James DeVito.
Yes.
Mickey Snyder.
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. Moves us on to number three, discussion, uh, Palo Pinto vacation request, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Floor is open. Wade.
I believe we postponed this, didn't we, until, uh, some people had a chance to do it onsite?
Done it by this meeting.
So it's, if it's not done, it's too bad.
Yeah, Mr. Grinnell, Wade, is Wade with you?
Wade is with me, yes.
Wade, Wade, why don't you come on up to the mic? There's a chance you're gonna-
Yeah, I'm Richard Grinnell, here for the Palo Pinto vacation. I put together another packet, uh, to help try to clarify what you should have in front of you. Basically, uh, just, uh, we're here to, uh, get a 100-foot portion of Palo Pinto vacated. We're trying to create a clear title to help, uh, be able to sell our business. Uh, I did give you a little list of the, uh, what, what has transpired from 1932 when the original house was built on the property. And the, uh, the dates that the city actually issued business licenses and conditional use permits for the use of that building as a bed and breakfast. Uh, we did go through all of the notifications for the property owners. We did send off the petition of vacation to the abutting owners. Uh, and as I mentioned last time, we did go to planning and to parks who both approved it. If you look at this map here, I'll give you the idea, the map with the red lines on it. Uh, you've got Ojo Street, it runs down this way, and along the bottom is Palo Pinto. Now, the blue portion is the portion that we're asking for vacation of. You'll notice that the building's on it, um, one of those, the one towards the top, that building is, uh, part of, uh, Five Ojo Bed and Breakfast. The building next to it is actually, uh, a cottage next door for Gilded Lily. So there's really two buildings which have been built over the years on that road. Going to the next page, this is the plat map, uh, could have been the one that Beverly was talking about. Uh, this little blue portion here is the 100-foot section of Palo Pinto that we're looking to vacate. And then I had, just had some pictures for you. This picture here, uh, with the red, the red lines show you basically that's where Palo Pinto would go. It takes up pretty much of the whole house, uh, of this building here. Now, there is a building over here on this side, that is the cottage for Gilded Lily. So those are the two buildings which right now sit on top of Palo Pinto. Going to the next page, the picture on this side is really, I was standing pretty much right at the point where the vacation would end. And looking back towards the two buildings. So that's sort of the rear view of the portion that would be vacated. Now, this other picture that's next to it was just, I turned around and said, this is what's behind it, which is just a bunch of trees right now. Then I have another picture to give you an idea of the area itself. This picture here shows you that, I mean, there's a little red arrow on each one of your pictures, but, uh, this is where Ojo is right now. The arrow is basically where Palo Pinto would be. I mean, so behind it is really a ravine, basically, and there's, there's nothing right now built behind it at all. And then the last two pages were the, uh, the original vacation petition that we had sent off and had been signed by all of the, uh, abutting owners. So that's what we're requesting, um, is to try to vacate that, like I said, since we do have two buildings on top of it right now. Any questions?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, I did. Uh, the other day, when we were having, at the last meeting here, we were having a discussion about vacating and we got to another vacation of, of another street. And there was discussion about fair market value and or $200 per lot. And I'm wondering, is that applying in this situation to the, the abutting property owners? If there's four of them? No? Terry's telling me, he's giving me that look, no, leave it. Okay, no, thank you. Never mind, I got my answer.
Mr. McLuhan.
Now, the, um, um, Richard, just for my own knowledge, your, your survey is the L shape. And this piece here is somebody else's property. Yeah, if you talk about this L shape here. This is, this is you. Yes, that's correct. That is me, and that is somebody else, yes. Yeah, um, I didn't think about that. I don't know how they access that. I don't know if that comes off Emporia, I suppose. I don't know. Well- Yeah, Anderson is right behind there. There's also, right now, there's an access road down there. It's gonna be- Uh, and I would imagine it would really be, if anyone was going to develop that, they would have to use the access road. Uh, cause Emporia is actually, I think, up on the other side of the ravine. So if you come down, you can sort of see, if you look at the overview picture.
That's the access road.
Yeah, that line right in the middle, there's, that's right now an access road which is used by utility folks. And that's where a lot of the sewer lines, I think, are running now.
In the springtime, it's a fast-running creek.
Well, just making sure that there's not, I mean, there's never been any access to any of that down through there. I can't imagine how it could be done.
Drive through the garage.
Mr. Mitchell, sorry.
Based on the vacating portion of Palo Pinto, through having gone through the processes and the applications up to this point, I'd like to make a motion that the city honor the petition to vacate Palo Pinto Street to the four adjacent property owners of Burrell, Stone, Peter, and Grimdale.
I second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
What that means is the attorney general. I understand, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, appreciate it. All right, moves this on to number five.
Yes.
Which would be the discussion of ordinance for intimate theater for C3 as a permitted use. Motion to discuss.
Motion. Second.
Floor is open.
Somewhere, we have in all of our stuff, I don't know if we really actually have the, yeah, we do have the ordinance. It was in here, here it is. It was in our packet, came to a dra- It was in our packet, came day draft number two unfinished, and it was in our packet today. Looks like the, looks like this one came, got completed by the attorney before he got sick. I'm sure some people want to read it, so I'll just hold off making a motion to.
We just entertain a motion to read it, that way we'll have it on record.
So moved.
Oh, thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Sign the number and read it.
Is this, just reading for clarification and record?
No, let's, let's sign a number and read it. That is the motion.
All right, the motion wants to assign a number and read it. We got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're good. We don't have to have a roll call for that one, just assign a number.
The ordinance number will be 2191. An ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code to establish an additional use in quiet, an additional use in quiet use commercial C3 zones, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed the current code provisions relating to land use in quiet use commercial C3 zones, and whereas it has been determined that it is in the best interest of the city to amend the municipal code. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, Section One, that the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following definition, intimate theater, a building used for dramatic presentation, stage entertainment, musical concerts, or the presentation of motion pictures, with a maximum capacity equal to four times the number of onsite parking places at the theater. No food or drink to be offered for sale onsite. Section Two, that the Eureka Springs Municipal Code is hereby amended to add the following as a use allowed in quiet use commercial C3 zones, intimate theater. Section Three, sever validity clause, in the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance, code, section, or chapter as a whole, or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance, code, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section Four, repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict therewith or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. Snider.
Okay, first, I think I said it at the last meeting, there really needs to be a little bit more specificness in regards to time, so on and so forth, hours of res, I don't think what's in the code is all that sufficient unless we at least make comment to it. But my biggest problem with this whole thing, and oh, this is gonna be ugly. We, the city, several times, not just this council, but many councils and many times, have been accused of being prejudicial towards this person or that person, be it for or against an issue. And yet, when we had the community neighborhood meeting at the Gavioli with all the neighbors there, and the Crescent people, and everybody else, and some of us council people, it was the neighbors that were being prejudicial. Now, I'm having a problem with this on both sides of the issue. The city gets yelled at for doing that, then the neighbors turn around and do it. And I want to explain exactly what was said at that community meeting for the people who were not there, and for the council who wasn't there, because the neighbors had gone on and explained exactly what their problems were, with the lights, the noise, the late hours, the people, the whole nine yards. I asked all of them how long they had lived around what originally was the Old Stone Church. I believe the longest any of the neighbors had been there is 12 years, I can't remember if there was one that had been there for 15 years, but none of them had been there when the Old Stone Church was the Old Stone Church. So I described the activities that had gone on with this church, weddings all times, the day and night receptions, the people, the lights, the noise, everything they had complained about in regards to what was going on with this intimate theater. And I, my question to them was, after describing what the Old Stone Church had been like, my question to them was, if someone else bought it and turned it back into a church, as it originally was, and all of these events were going on that they were complaining about, what would they do? What would their reaction be? And their response was, oh, well, it would be a church, so it wouldn't matter. Now, I'm sorry, but to me, that is being prejudicial towards a person as opposed to a situation. If the situation is abhorrent in regards to what's going on right now, it should be equally abhorrent if it had reverted back to another church and had the same stuff going on, and it obviously wasn't. So here, we, the city, are being accused of being prejudicial and everything else, and taking sides, and yet the neighbors turned right around and did exactly that. So I am right square in the middle, as usual, understanding both sides, hating what both sides are doing, understanding why both sides are doing, and I have no clue which way I'm gonna go now, because we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. So it's up to y'all.
Mr. Mitchell.
I've walked by the theater multiple occasions since this whole thing started, and I attended that meeting that Elise Rennig had in conjunction with the, with the neighbor that is now moving. He, he's the one that went around and, and gathered all the neighbors to come to that meeting for her specifically. And I have walked by there since then, when, when the theater's been going on, and you can hear there might, you can hear something might be going on in the building, but it's just a low hum. It's not near as disruptive as you would think if you were discussing noise. That is the upper historic loop, the old 62B. That Budweiser truck that comes roaring through there has to be a minimum of 60 feet long, if it's a foot. All of the Ben Keith and the Cisco trucks and all the other trucks go roaring through there all the time. The traffic, it's the upper historic loop, guys. I, I do understand and insensitive to the residential areas. I mean, if you went off down on Vaughn Street, or you went back up there and hit around on Owen, et cetera, no, the noise wouldn't be near as bad. But if you're gonna be right, have your house right on the upper historic loop, you're gonna have to expect noise, and headlights, and a few things that goes with it. Intimate theater in that building is an excellent use for that building. It works out well, they're trying to be a good neighbor, it's, they probably could have done more originally in the first place, they didn't, they drug their feet, we understand that, but when they got to the meeting and they listened to the concerns, they tried very hard. Interestingly, there's a really nice new, very, very nice new entrance into the, into the parking lot, it is completely chained off so that there is no traffic going through it, there's a new concrete port, there's a new fence between Quinn Bennett's property and there, surprisingly, the neighbor that's moving did not choose to get that same wooden privacy fence put up on their side, why, I'm not too sure. I know there's a fire lane there, but there's still a property line that that fence could have been on. I think the ordinance that is before us right now is a strong ordinance, it's a good one, there's not gonna be any more intimate theaters probably, I, I can't even think of a place where there's parking other than possibly, or Melio's that you might could have turned into an intimate theater, but in C3. I, I think we're really truthfully talking probably about the Gavioli here at this point, and, and I think we should continue on with the ordinance as it is, as it has been written.
Mr. McLung.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2191 on its first reading.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
There's, a concern has been raised that the definition here of intimate theater includes a building, and should it really be a business? But I'm looking at the code, or should that word really be business rather than building? Looking at the code here, and it, and it all refers to quiet uses must be carried out in a building, and this is to continue on, a building originally designed as a dwelling, or which existed as a commercially designed building prior to October 1987. Anyway, the point is, it's, it's references to a building, not the business in particular. So that's, I think, in that regard, I think that the way we have it written, it probably stands.
Mr. DeVito, I'll thank you.
I think you have to question how we're going about this whole procedure. We're basically changing a whole class of business in, in a zone, basically to address one business. I feel that's kind of alarming that we're considering passing ordinances that way. Reading from Section One, building use for dramatic presentation, stage entertainment, musical concerts, presentation of motion pictures. This is way more intrusive than the requirement for a CUP in C3. So I think council should seriously considering requiring a CUP for this type of business to occur. I don't like the patchwork approach we're going with rezoning properties, because the next item on our agenda is workshop for council and, and planning to get together, hopefully to develop an overview on how the city should be, yet here we are trying to pass an ordinance to basically address one property, and I find that's rather alarming that we're heading in that direction. I would entertain voting for this if there was a CUP attached to it, but I can't vote for it this way, because it's way more intrusive than a B and B that would require a CUP. So I think we need to take that into consideration, we need to take a big picture of Eureka Springs, and I think crafting ordinances for one business is a dangerous process.
Mr. McLung.
First of all, we did not make that C3, that was done by court of law. Okay, so it's C3 now, no matter what, whether the neighbors like it or don't like it, that's what it is, C3 zoning. Now, granted, when, when, when it was opened as this theater, there was a stretch on, on their capability of doing it. In fact, I don't think anyone ever asked or even bothered with it until it came up in front of the planning commission. No harm, no foul, nobody ever said jack, neighbors or anyone. And then it became open to the public that maybe there was a conflict, and then the rile started. Well, you know what? I don't like circumventing the law any more than anybody else. But the fact is, is that it is C3, it's been there, it was operating prior to any conflict, without conflict, so I think what we're doing with this is resolving the issue to the best of our ability. I don't think that, that this particular usage is particularly intrusive anywhere in C3. You know, there are requirements for C3 businesses that they have to meet, so, you know, to me, it's not an issue. It's time to move on with it.
Mr. Zeller, I think you're next.
Yeah, we have here a building that had been used commercially, I mean, I'm sorry, people, I do consider a church a commercial enterprise, and whether we like it or not, that's true, the zoning is C3, C being the operative thing. Now, I personally don't understand why they didn't go for C2 and get around all of this controversy, but that's another conversation. As long as we have this building here, and as long as we understand that the change that we're making here applies to all of the buildings in this area that are zoned C3, I'm surprised that we haven't heard from the restaurants suggesting that 9:00 is a very early time to have a restaurant to have to close its doors and be out of business. Dining is, gets later and later in Eureka Springs, and I should think that would be inconvenient to them, but they haven't said anything, and it's not in this ordinance, so we're sticking with they have to be closed by 9:00, which I think is a little early. But I, I think there isn't anything intrusive in this activity. They're not doing motion pictures, they're not doing musical concerts, they're simply putting on this, this dramatic presentation, and we have to consider that, that this is, this building has to be used for something. I, my impression, and I was at the same meetings that Mickey was at, that what the neighbors really want is an empty building with nothing going on. Well, that is not practical, because this is a building that has an investment of money in it, and it has to do something or other to make back at least some of its expenses to pay its taxes if we want it maintained, otherwise we could just let it sit there and crumble to the ground. So I, I don't see anything wrong with going with this ordinance exactly the way it is. CUPs are argumentative. If they had to have a CUP, and for some reason or other it was denied, then we're looking at a lawsuit, because we clearly have, you know, made this a permitted activity in this area. So I am for voting on this ordinance now.
Mr. Mitchell.
The issue of the times and all are in another section, they're not in this ordinance per se, and, and planning has worked on those, is working on the issue of the hours, and has, I think, made a recommendation, either we have it here or we're going to get it, and likewise, I believe the issue of the animal, and, and that had been discussed already. So I, I'm in, I concur with what Mr. McLung and Ms. Zeller have said, and as a reminder, we're talking about the building, not the business or the people that own it.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. There seems to be a kind of some discussion, we're having a discussion now between the difference between a permitted use and a conditional use permit. I wonder, could I invite our planning commissioner up to, to give her opinion about why she and the rest of the planning commission suggested that this should be a CUP rather than a permitted use? Just to, just to get that clarification.
If you're inclined, yeah. If you want to, you can do that.
Would you, would you mind directly? Thank you.
I didn't bring my code book, but at the very first of the code about C3, it tells you that C3 is gonna be right next to residential neighborhoods, and the reason that we thought that it should be conditional use is like James said, we have conditional use for B and Bs, we have conditional use for tourist lodging, we thought this was also something that should be a conditional use, just because if you make it outright use, that means any building in C3, even if they have three parking spaces, that means 12 people could go in and, and do one of these things. And so we just thought to err on the side of caution that we should do it as a CUP. It is gonna have restrictions because of being C3, it does have hours of operation, and it does have a list of things that they can and cannot do, so that is somewhat restrictive. The parking space is gonna be somewhat restrictive, but because it was something new added to our zoning code, we believed a conditional use would just be erring on the side of caution.
Question for Beverly.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, let, you finish.
Just follow up on that. So, in your mind, what are the repercussions for requiring a CUP as, as, if it's a permitted use, then okay, I understand, any building in C3 could be permitted such, if they qualify. But what, what would happen if we require them to get a CUP? I mean, what, what, in short, what's the brief bullet process?
They fill out an application, a public hearing is held, and all the neighbors are notified, we have a public hearing, and if they meet all the requirements, they get a CUP. But the ramification also is, if, after they get that CUP... But the ramification also is, if, after they get that CUP, if they don't follow the requirements, or they change what they're doing, say a B&amp;B adds another unit, and they haven't come back to planning, then that CUP can be revoked at that process. If it's an outright use, there's no revocation process. I guess they could be cited.
Well, I guess the follow-up is, the public hearing, you could have 100 people with pitchforks and, you know, wanna tar and feather somebody. But if they meet all the requirements, then you at the planning commission say, okay, you meet the requirements. Sorry, public.
There is a very specific list of things that they have to meet for a CUP. And one of them is the, the neighborhood. If the people within the 200 feet, you would have to give them special consideration, because this is their neighborhood. But there is a list of things that we go through to make sure that those requirements are met, and that's the only things that we can vote, we can decide that on.
Mr. Mitchell.
So with the CUP, you... Let's just go back, because we're talking about the Gavioli. Let's just go back. So when you made this definition and thought of it as a CUP, were you thinking that the Gavioli already operating as a business in that building was going to have to then stop and apply for a CUP, or were you going to grandfather them under as that, that one building that's already operating, much like B&amp;Bs were done before 1986, and have a list that that was grandfathered? Where were you going with that thought?
I certainly thought that they would apply for a CUP.
Really? Hmm, okay.
Mr. DeVito.
Acknowledging the sentiments of planning, and the fact that we probably have the votes for a CUP if they do go through the process here at the table. My concern is that you are opening up all of C3 to another activity. Based on one business's efforts to try and stay, it's a tenant. It's, it's not the property owner's business. It's a tenant in a rental situation in a business. Yet we are drafting an ordinance that will open up an entire zone to intrusion into the neighborhoods that people have no say in their own neighborhoods as to what types of businesses are going to be locating there. And that sets a very dangerous precedent. You know, there's a variance up on the white dove manor. Okay? So as Mr. Mitchell said, well, there's maybe not enough parking. Well, what if a planning commission in the future decides, hey, we're gonna let them cut those trees down and put in parking so that they can increase the capacity in that theater, because that's good business? I think the primary focus of this table has to be to respect the neighborhood in which commercial businesses are trying to enter into. We've got a lot of commercial property sitting around for sale, empty. Yet we're trying to change an entire zone to allow a commercial business to come into a residential neighborhood without the people who are invested in that neighborhood having a say-so in it. And, and I'm sorry, that, that goes against everything that a residential neighbor should, should be.
Mr. McClung.
James, with all due respect, sir, it's already C3. It's already commercial. It's done. It's, it's already there. So they can do all kinds of things. So we're, we're not... That was set before we ever came along.
In effect, spot zoning.
Huh?
Spot zoning is what it is.
It's, it's C3 across the street. You know, it's C1 down the street. So it's not. It's already been done. So you're adding one more usage that was there and operating before it was ever brought to this table, without any complications or problems. So, you know, you wanna beat a dead horse, beat the dead horse. You wanna, you wanna shoot the horse, shoot the horse. Myself, I'm in favor.
Any further?
Call for the question.
We have a motion on the table in a second. Yes, your call for the question, that's what we're doing now.
Call for the question.
Yes. Would you repeat the?
Yes, it's to approve it on its first reading.
Okay. Maids in seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
That was the call of the question.
Yeah. Call the question. Okay.
And now on the motion.
Yes, and now on the motion. All in favor on the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye.
Two noes.
I said aye.
Said aye.
Positively, I said aye. I'd rather be present, but I said aye.
Okay. Motion carried. All right, moves us on to number six, discussion of workshop date for a master plan. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. DeVito.
Well, sooner the better.
Anybody else? Mr. Perkicoff.
Are there any dates in the near future that we might get together with planning and council? Anybody have any ideas? Kind of open the table up for that.
What are we gonna do with this meeting?
January comes to mind.
I mean, that's a valid question. What are we gonna do?
It is a valid question, and I think...
Mr. DeVito, you kind of brought this forward, this workshop.
Well, we have a master plan developing, and planning has a master plan developing. I'd like to think that we have one master plan for the city as opposed to two separate master plans, which, as is evidenced by what just transpired at this table, would be potentially in conflict with one another. So I'd like planning and council to at least get on the same page.
Mr. Toner.
I'd like to ask the planning chair a question. How close to a, a master plan are y'all? How much have you discussed?
Please don't talk to the side. Oh, sorry about that.
Yes, ma'am, come on, please.